I would like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for February 13, and invite you all to please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Alright, that will bring us to item three on our agenda. Roll call. Chair Nemeth?
Here.
Vice Chair Avery?
Here.
Commissioner French?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson absent. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, that does give us a quorum for the evening. And that will bring us to item four, the review of our agenda.
Yes, so, item eight A. Unfortunately, the mailing labels for the residents were not provided, so we are requesting that that item be continued to the March 12 hearing.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Saxton. Because it was noticed as an item on our agenda, is there anybody here who came to speak on that item for the public hearing of that item? Okay. Then may I get a motion to continue the item?
Uh, so moved, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue the item to the regular Planning Commission meeting of March 12. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, then that item will be continued to our next scheduled meeting. Thank you. Alright, that brings us to item five on the agenda. May I please get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you very much. The motion carries. And that brings us to public comments on our consent calendar items and on any items that are not on our agenda. So, have a seat for just a minute, and then it'll be your turn. So if anybody is here to speak on our consent calendar items, which consist of our approving our minutes from last month, or on any items that are not on our agenda, then you may come forward and you will have three minutes to speak.
And, uh, I don't know how I actually got here, besides the FCC number, and, uh, the, 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 the pro rates? Oh, no, no, a federator. I'm a federator, um, and, uh, you know, let me just take a seat and, and then get caught up with the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, you know, actually, I just wanted to, um, say, um, say that, you know, I, I was here as, um, uh, uh, like, it's a, like, a modern day's ratings system, but, um, federal, federal rating, and, um, there was a couple of companies that, um, that didn't meet the standards, so, um, put you in, in that class of being rated. Um, and, uh, there, there's some, there's inequalities in the development, um, and, uh, the transportation, um, uh, um, and I've been work, uh, I needed to sign a contract with, uh, I believe, um, be, um, uh, the collab, but there is a, a way that we give you guys a rate as in like crime, and so it, it, uh, it is going to, that we've just figured out, I tried to figure it out very much, um, like a ten to twenty-eight, to twenty-eight. So what, what we would have to do is, um, maybe, uh, take your thirty million down to three million. Oh, no, 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 that, that's too low. Um, something like that, but, you know, we can, we can work it out. And that's, that's, um, what I, I'm intelligible that I had to say, and when I am intelligible, I have a disorder, by the way.
Okay, and what is your name?
Um, my name is, uh, Nikki Tes- uh, well, Nicole Tes- Tes- Teso Gas.
Alright, well, thank you.
G S P S, um, O G A S, to, to pursue gas.
Alright, thank you very much, Nicole. I appreciate it. Is there anybody else here for public comment time? Alright, then that will move us to our consent calendar. May I please get a motion to approve the minutes from our previous Planning Commission meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Alright, the meetings from our previous Planning Commission meeting are approved. Thank you. And our item eight A has been continued, so that will bring us to item nine. New business. Ms. Saxton?
Thank you. This item will be presented by our Associate Planner, Justin Sauter.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Awesome. So this is for a conditional use permit seventeen zero zero eight, and Noel is actually gonna take the lead on this, and I'll help him out with the slides.
Uh, good evening, Chair Nemeth, and members of the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Noel.
Uh, this evening, there's something a little bit, uh, different on the agenda, and, uh, there's, there's a lot of material in the packet, but before we begin, what I, I want to point out is that we really have a very limited decision this evening. And what that is, is, um, for conditional use permits that have been approved, there's a process by which the Planning Commission can review a conditional use permit to ensure that the, uh, permitee is operating their, their business in a manner that's consistent with the conditions of approval, and in a manner which is not detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties in the vicinity. Um, and so, the, the Planning Commission this evening is going to be reviewing conditional use permit seventeen dash zero zero eight, um, with the very specific purpose of determining whether or not there's sufficient evidence to warrant a full examination of that conditional use permit. Um, I will point out that one of the conditions in that CUP is that if there is problems that arise as a result of the business practices or the operations, um, that are detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, the Planning Commission does have the opportunity to review that conditional use permit. And we're gonna talk a little bit about that this evening. And I, I don't want to get into all of the gory details in the, in the packet. There's some incident reports, um, but to specifically identify what the problems are that have arose out of the result of the business practices of this particular business, um, to summarize, the incident reports detail crimes that include robbery, possession of a controlled substance, and loitering slash drug activity. And those are all related to the specific business location, um, that's applicable to that conditional use permit. Um, like I said, I'm not gonna get into every single detail of, um, of the, of the, excuse me, of the incident reports, um, 'cause it's really a very low bar, really. All we're asking for is, is there enough evidence to do an investigation? And I think those three activities, um, are sufficient for that. But I will like to invite the Planning Commission's attention to, uh, page four of seven on one of the incident reports. I think this really sums up what the issue is here. And this is in the narrative of the deputies when they're, they're talking about a narcotics issue that they're having. And they say, "When previously speaking with persons who are arrested for controlled substances-related offenses, they stated it is common, it is common to use or buy controlled substances from other patrons inside this business." So to summarize, this business is being used to sell and use narcotics. That in and of itself is a public nuisance and illegal under the Health and Safety Code. So with that, uh, staff is recommending that you make a finding that there's sufficient evidence to warrant a full investigation, uh, that will result in a future public hearing, uh, with all of the facts and opportunity for the applicant to rebut those facts. Um, I'm available for any questions, um, and I'm also available to answer any questions that you may have with regard to what a fish game is. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, and although this is not a public hearing, if there are any members of the community who came forward tonight to speak on that, out of a courtesy, we will allow you to speak. Um, but this is a decision-making process for us as a commission to simply answer that very simple question, is there sufficient evidence to bring it for a full hearing? So this is not a hearing. But is there anybody here who wishes to step forward? Please state your name, and I don't know if you feel that, are the speakers' lips up here? Okay. Um, thank you very much.
No, thank, thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak. Good evening, my name is Monica Romallo Young, and I am the attorney for Fish and Game, the, the business that is the subject of this, uh, of this agenda item. And I wanted to just address a couple of things. Um, first, I, I reviewed the police reports that were attached to the, that were, I think, the subject of the, of, um, the previous speaker's report. And it looks like a lot of what happened, happened in the parking lot. And there's a lot of different businesses in that part, in that shopping center. I don't necess- I don't know necessarily it's the customers of the store that, um, were involved in, in most of the incidents. Um, second, with regard to the, the, the comment that, um, some customers said that they go to the store to, um, to purchase drugs. I just have to point out that it's hearsay, it hasn't been proven, that's, that's what they actually said, and that it's, it's true that that is, it was, is what's happening. But having said that, um, I'm here because the owners of the business are more than willing to, uh, do whatever they can to, to work with the city to make sure that their business lives up to community standards. Um, and there are many things that they're willing to do short of having the, the conditional use permit revoked. They're willing to, uh, put more security in, change the, um, the business hours, limit the number, the, the age of the people that are allowed to go in there, make it more of like, uh, a, a club membership where the people that go in to play the games have to be vetted. Um, and so that everybody will have their ID, everybody that's there will know who's, you know, who's there, who's playing. Um, anything that we can do to, to work with the city to get that done, we're, we're willing to do, to do that. Um, and then, um, I just wanted to make clear that the, the fishing game, there's a mention in the report that if they're, that people are going there, it's really an illegal gambling business. It's not. It, it's completely skill. California law, uh, distinguishes between gambling and games of skill. And this is just, it's a business, you go in there, there, there are a bunch of, like, arcade game-like tables, and you go and play a game where you try to shoot fish as they swim by. And you get points for how many fish that you, for as many fishes you get. And you can, you're awarded cash prizes, but California law allows that. Um, so, but if there's any issues, we're more than willing to work with the city to remedy whatever it is. And I'm also willing to provide them, uh, a, a further legal analysis of, of the games and how they work, to, to show that they're in full compliance with California law.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who is interested in speaking on this item?
Oh, hey, um, you know, there is a couple of things that, um, that businesses could do, and which is like, um, develop the, we found, um, from Tenth to, uh, was that, Palmdale Boulevard or Avenue P, um, the, the commercial, um, development, so that, that, that they're international, and, uh, the state could conduct their investigations and perform their, uh, perform their, uh, operations. Um, and, and that would go as long, as well as, um, Homeland Security or, um, the Pentagon is which, um, we come, um, however, uh, and, 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 but, but my tribe, I'm saying, is, is my, I, I actually have a tribe, and so I know that we don't, we are considered the same as other people, but as a tribe, but we only deal with ourselves. And, and, um, I mean, I'm called, you know, I like to call myself gutter boy, and then them, um, her skanks, you know, I say gutter boy and her skanks. Um, but under California, um, I would be management. Uh, I did notice that, um, there was a Spriggs right there, or, I don't know what it was, I'm sorry, something, and I, I was just actually looking, and, um, the licenses for, uh, uh, have not been so much, uh, of, uh, validated, or, and then you, because of the rating, ten to, ten to twenty-eight, me, that translates into something else as the permitting and the, the things paid for. And that, that's why we wanted to, uh, offer you, uh, like a salary rate. Okay, we'll pay everything, public works, um, um, uh, your state office, school, um,
Okay, you have about thirty seconds left, so we're gonna wrap it up.
Um, and, uh, and we'll just, uh, start over with, um, and it, and also goes with voting. Um, and we'll, um, because if you did not know that we did have a corporation, uh, we gave your corporate tax breaks. And, um, and so that was part of it, and so they're, um, so, so, and we're just looking to impose these as cap and trade, and then like, you know, kitchen, and, uh,
Thank you, Nicole, very much.
Does anybody, can anybody?
Thank you. Have a seat, please. Thank you.
I, no, no, I'm sorry, because the wildlife preserve, I was, I was actually lassoing because I'm not, because I, I, I actually work.
Nicole, your time is up. Could you please have a seat?
Well, I was here because of her. I mean, we was, we was partners. I mean, like, as a closing partner.
And you had time, and she had time, so could you please have a seat?
Um.
Thank you.
I'll just leave, thank you. You're welcome.
Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Okay. Then we will open it up for discussion. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Doran? On this, any of the commissioners?
Yeah, I do.
Could you please come forward, Mr. Doran?
I, I did get a chance to review the file, and thank you for your presentation this evening. Is there, is there any direct evidence with respect to law enforcement observing and engaging in illegal gambling at all, inside the business?
Um, I mean, I think the, the short answer is, is yes, but let me, let me explain. Um, so, what's a fish game, right? The, and, and I, I think it was pretty well explained. You, you put some money in, you shoot at fish. If you shoot fish, enough fish, you get money out, right? And under California law, a device is a slot machine, um, if it's a device, that you give it some monetary value, something of value, to play the device, and by any element, any, is, is a very specific word here and very important, any element of hazard or chance, the player has an opportunity to rec- receive something of value in return. Now, the fiction on these fish games is that it takes some kind of dexterity, skill, timing to shoot the appropriate fish. Um, there's small fish have small value, larger fish have a greater value. And if you hit the right combination of fish at the right time, there's skill involved, and then you get some kind of payment. That's a fiction. The reality is, is that the games are programmed to have an al- algorithm where you set the rate of return. So you can set, if a hundred dollars go in, only ninety dollars come out. There's no skill in that, right? Um, there have been a lot of entities that have evaluated these fish games to determine whether or not they qualify to be a slot machine. And I believe, and I, if I can remember the organization, the Colorado Associated Gambling, they did a, uh, an investigation of this and determined this acts exactly like a slot machine. Now, can you program those devices so they're not a slot machine? Absolutely. You sure can. Now, if you, if you played the game and all you got was like a free chance to play longer or something, that would be legal. But the, but the, the basis that these are a game of, of skill, that's, that's a fiction.
Well, I have a question, is, is, I remember when we approved the CUP. I remember when we approved the CUP. Um, has that changed? Has the law changed? Has the game changed?
No, uh, so, what the Planning Commission approved is an arcade. Right, and, and then the normal understanding of what an arcade is, is there's some games of amusement where children or adults go, and you, you submit money to the game, and you get to play for a period of time. Right? That's, we are allowing that land use. We didn't, we didn't say you can bring a bunch of slot machines in here and run a casino.
Okay, so they, so they're not living up to the CUP that we approved?
What, we are?
Changed it, that's what I'm trying to do.
Well, I mean, let, let's just assume for the minute that all of the games in there are not illegal slot machines under California law. There's, there's, there's still, it, the land use is still in violation of the conditional use permit. Even if those games are totally legal, you still have problems where there's, there's a robbery there. They're allowing the, the patrons of the, of the establishment to use and sell drugs.
That is what we are here to determine this evening.
If that's a cafe, if that's a Starbucks, if that's a grocery store, whatever the land use is, that's a public nuisance that's not allowed.
Well, and I think that, I think that's where a little bit of my confusion comes in, because all the police reports are about crimes in the area, but then you're talking about the use of the building itself, as opposed to the crime. So you're saying it's a little bit of both?
Well, if you,
That now they've brought in slot machines, which is not what we approved, and there's crime going on?
Yeah, well, there's two things. The, the evidence that was submitted by staff, those incident reports specifically identify that location as the subject of the crime. Right, that's the location, not the parking lot. I mean, I know there was some testimony that, that there, that the narcotics arrest was in the parking lot. That's true. But in the narrative, it says that the person that was in the car goes into the location, comes out with a, a male friend. The cops follow him and arrest him for drugs. So it's specifically linked to that location. It's not like someone's walking down the street and just happens to get pulled over for drugs there.
No, right, and, and I, and I read the reports. So I'm just trying to figure out, because I expected you to be talking about the reports and the crime and how it related to that. And, and what you explained was instead that the use, that these are slot machines and not the games.
Well, I, I haven't investigated the game of the games. I can't tell you right now that they are or are not slot machines. Like I said, it's possible to program those machines so they're just like any other video game.
Okay.
But what I heard from their attorney is that you put money in, you play some game, and you get something of value back. That sounds like a slot machine.
I think it's important for us to remember that what we are trying to determine this evening is, do we believe, based on what was presented to us this evening, based on what we've heard, is there sufficient evidence to bring this for a full hearing? Meaning, if you look on page one of item nine, do we believe that this is now potentially being operated in a manner, um, inconsistent with the conditions of approval, or that is detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to property in the vicinity?
Right.
So based on, that is what we need to determine this evening. Do, because at that point, when we do have a full public hearing, much more evidence could be brought forward before us, there would be a lot more detail. Um, everybody would have an opportunity, the community. And I think it's very important to, that the attorney did come forward and say that they are willing, that this, um, applicant is willing to come forward and work with the city in any way. And my feeling is that by doing that with a public hearing, it would give everybody an opportunity to present their cases fairly and evenly, and for us to review this. Because based on what I read in here, I do believe that we have enough sufficient evidence to bring forward. So, that would be my feeling on this. And that would give everybody an opportunity to come forward with their evidence.
What would be involved with a full hearing? What would be done ahead of time? Would law enforcement be involved? What would they be looking at to present evidence to us?
Um, yeah, so, so the investigation from the staff level would, would include reaching out to the Sheriff's Department, getting as much information about the criminal activity at or near that location as possible. It would also involve a review of all the conditions at the, the planning level, um, and also bringing in, uh, public safety to, to discuss whether or not they're meeting their conditions of approval with regard to their security plan, and whether or not, um, any secu- security features that they have in place are, are adequate. And then at that time, you know, if, at the public hearing, the Planning Commission determines that, that, that there's an issue here and that it's impacting public safety, um, then they have an opportunity to amend or add conditions, or if the Planning Commission, um, desires and there's sufficient evidence, and then they can revoke the CUP entirely.
Okay, my question is, what, uh, specific conditions that we approved back in, uh, twenty seventeen are being, uh, allegedly violated by this operation?
Uh, well, primarily, it's condition number nineteen, uh, which indicates that if problems arise as a result of the business practices or operations that are detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, Planning Commission can review the CUP. Um, in addition, it's my understanding that they are in violation of condition number twenty-four, which requires the applicant to provide, um, the Crime Prevention Division with a security plan. And my understanding is that the city has not received the required security plan.
What would a security plan entail, roughly? Any idea?
I think we have staff who can speak to that.
We have Carrie German.
Ms. German, could you please come forward and answer that?
Good evening. Um, the security plan, as they're written, um, is, uh, how funds are transported, uh, what type of security they have, um, what type of security they have, camera systems, safe to be installed, and their operating procedures, just to ensure that, that everything is operating safely, and, and they're not at risk of being victims of a crime, or that crimes are being committed in the surrounding area. We also require that we do an onsite inspection of the premises, and we have not done one on that, on that site with, with the applicant. We've gone there on our own, myself and Sheriff's Department have gone there. Unfortunately, the business was not open at the time, so we were unable to get inside of the building. But we did not do what we, what we refer to as a SEP10 inspection, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, which we go through and we look at their security systems, we, we check out how the, the building is set up, what the operation is going to be, and talk to their staff about, you know, robbery prevention and, and break-ins and things like that. But we, the applicant never contacted us to fulfill that part of the conditional use permit.
Were there requests made to them to comply with you?
Excuse me?
Were there requests made to the applicant to connect with you, to call you, and-
That is part of the conditional use permit, and then, and then they are required to contact us and make those follow-ups, to, to schedule those at their convenience. And we do everything at the convenience of the applicant, and the applicant never followed through with, with that part of the-
So they never followed through?
No, they did not. Is that it?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. German. Let me check with my counsel.
If we, if it is the commission's decision to decide to move forward and open up a full investigation, make that recommendation tonight, the applicant and the representative will have the opportunity to make a full presentation in terms of what evidence is being presented on staff's side and respond. You'll have a full opportunity to respond tonight, we're just limited to public comment, which is just, it's previously set at three minutes. And because it's just an informational item and a recommendation, we're not really going into the full evidentiary considerations being raised tonight.
Thank you.
I'm Federator, so I have, I'm a total medium in between them both.
I'm going to ask you to leave, Nicole, please, or sit back down, okay?
Like the DMV or something?
All right, so Commissioner, discussion on this, any motion, any ideas, comments?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So, if we were to approve to have this reviewed tonight, I'm not sure who I'm asking this question to, but-
We're all gonna listen.
The, the business would continue to operate under the CUP? Correct.
No qualms under investigation.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, my, for what it's worth, I, you know, I, I'm not 100% sold on whether this is gambling or not, because if it's gambling, it seems to me that that should be a black and white thing with the state, with the law. I mean, it's like, either it's gambling or it's not gambling. If there's, you know, I, I'm very familiar with the way CUPs operate, and as we all are, I'm sorry. But, you know, if there's, if, if condition 24 was never, which to me sounds like a pretty important part of the condition package, if that was glossed over, ignored, or just forgotten about, or whatever, seems to me like that's kind of a big issue that is hard to ignore, as far as, you know, my voting to have this reviewed. That's, that's, you know, if, if it would have just been, well, maybe gambling's, maybe it's gambling, maybe it's not, and sure, there's crime that's being committed in a parking lot. Can you blame that on that business? Maybe, maybe not. But if, if, it certainly sounds like security, a security plan, given the crimes probably happening within 100 yards or so of the business, there should be a security plan if that's what we called for, so I'd have a hard time not wanting to get some more information down the road on this, just based on that.
Yeah, I would agree with that, that, they haven't, if they haven't complied with one of the conditions of the CUP, then I think we do need to review it, that's if they're not going to comply with the conditions. I do think that, I agree with Bart, that the, the incidents in the parking lot are not necessarily tied to, I don't see, somebody said, somebody said, might be worth looking into based on that. But, and the, the issue with the gambling, I, it seems that there's a possibility that that might be the case, but I don't know based on what. And there's, it's happening everywhere it says, but that doesn't mean it's happening here. And so a supposition, I think, is not necessarily a reason, nobody's been inside evidently. So to say, well, this is happening when nobody's seen it, I don't think would necessarily be, I, I would have liked to have seen something in the packet that said, we've been in there and this is happening, and the safety plan was not presented. As I read through this, it looked like there was some crime in the parking lot, and so we need to review the CUP. So evidently, there's a little bit more to it than that. But I think definitely them not complying with any of the conditions of the CUP would mandate a review, I think. I would agree.
So I'm of the opinion, certainly not different from my colleagues, I, I don't really see a nexus between the gambling and the criminal activity, and that was my major concern. But I do recognize that the place has been robbed, so clearly there's an issue going on there. And the fact that provision, I guess, number 24 in fact was violated. So I definitely think that that supports the position or the contention that we should hold a full hearing to find out exactly what's going on. And I would hope that in the process of this full hearing, more information is divulged with respect to the nexus with gambling and the criminal activity in the area, because there are, and I actually drove by there today just to see what, there are a number of businesses in that area. But I do recognize the city attorney's point of view that in the report, it does identify one or two people coming from that location and being spoken to by the Sheriff's Department, so I can see probably where you guys might try to make the connection. I just think it's dangerous just to do it from no, having no information about the illegal gambling and just connecting people in the, in the parking lot area. I think that's, that's something that we should really try to stay away from, because I think that will hurt other businesses as well. But because of article 20, I'm saying article 24, but
Condition.
Condition 24, I would be in agreement to a full hearing.
And I think that one of the things that we always try to do at our meeting is ask the applicant while they appear, have you read and do you understand your conditions of approval? And I'm gonna guess that question was asked at that time, and obviously when you're signing off on them. And I think that is the beauty of a conditional use permit. We are allowing a business to operate if they follow our conditions, and if we begin to feel that they are not, then that is where we can say, yes, we, we would like to review this and give everybody a fair chance to say, here's our story, and here's our story, and go forward from there. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we request staff to open up a full investigation of CUP 17-008.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Commissioner Ameth made the motion, and Commissioner French has a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Okay, then I would like to get a voice vote on that, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, and you have more work to do now, staff, sorry.
I have heard the discussion, so thanks for that.
All right, that will bring us to item 10 on our agenda, Staff Communications.
So I believe that everyone up here already knows, but we have Mr. Sauter over there, who is now our Associate Planner. So that is an exciting promotion for him, and then obviously, I'm up here, so Rob Bruce has retired from the city, and I'm now the Acting Planning Manager, but I'm also our Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development. So kind of wearing both hats, I'm up here as the Acting Planning Manager, and you'll see my name on the staff reports as Acting Planning Manager, so. Anything, and I'll be accompanying you on the Planning Commissioners Academy, along with Mike Meehan, our Acting Director. You have packets in front of you with your travel information, itineraries and everything, so I'm excited to get up there with you guys. Also, we will have our, a couple of members of our GPAC, our General Plan Advisory Committee, accompanying us on that trip as well, because the city's gonna invest in our engaged, engaged residents, so I think that's pretty cool. We have five items listed, actually six items already on our next Planning Commissioner agenda. So it's gonna be a full one, so there's some track maps, and a conditional use permit, and then a zoning ordinance amendment already, so be ready to have some, some staff reports to read next month. And that is it from my perspective.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for being kind.
All right, and does our attorney have any communications from staff's side?
I have nothing this evening, Madam Chair, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, item 11 is our Planning Commission Communications. Anybody, anything?
I would just like to congratulate the two of you, and I'd also like to point out our city manager came in tonight, and he is doing a heck of a job for the city, so proud of you, sir. And it's gonna be a fun year.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I also would like to just congratulate both of you, looking forward to working with you. Also want to just give a shout out, I don't know if he's gonna hear it or not, but Rob, I really enjoyed working with him. He was a really, really down-to-earth gentleman, he cooked some good jambalaya, I really enjoyed it. Introduced me to some beer. This is not being videotaped.
Oh, it is, your wife is watching right now.
But I, I really learned a lot from him, and so I'm looking forward to working with both of you and the entire commission. And you guys are doing an awesome job so far, so I appreciate it, congratulations to our city manager as well, thank you guys for being here.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, if there are no further communications, I will adjourn our meeting to our regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, March 12th, at seven o'clock, thank you all very much for being here.